All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to our special council meeting, our Committee of the Whole, on Monday, January 20th. We do have all members of council in attendance here. Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest among council this evening? Seeing none, if you find yourself in conflict, please let us know later. I need a mover and a seconder of the adoption of the published agenda for January 20th, the Committee of the Whole for the Council Roundtable Meeting. Moved by Councilmatey, supported by Counselor Allard. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, and that is carried. And now, at this point, do I need a motion? That's CEO Sweet. Okay, I'll seek a motion that our CEO be the presiding officer of our Committee of the Whole. Moved by Counselor Garen, supported by Counselor May, all in favor, and that is carried, CEO Sweet.
Mayor Bondi. So council, as with previous Committee of the Whole meetings, each each agenda item tonight may be discussed for up to 15 minutes. For each item, the counselor who introduced the topic will provide a brief summary, followed by any additional information or context from administration as needed. Please note, tonight's discussions are for deliberation purposes only. Should council determine that further action is necessary, the item must be formally brought forward to a regular council meeting for consideration. So with that, and we've done this a few times this term, the first item tonight's agenda is Essex Center Ballards and Parking Lines, introduced by Counselor Garen. So at this time, Counselor Garen, could you provide a summary of the topic you'd like to discuss?
Thank you, through the chair. Yeah, so just circling back on this, the actual request for this item was back in July. It was even a little bit before the streetscape was actually completed, but we were already getting complaints regarding the pavers, the markings for the parking on the streetscape, as well as the ballards. Now, six months, seven months have passed since that's submitted, and since the streetscape's been open. I'm getting less complaints about it, but I think we're also getting a lot of residents that are just refusing to park on the main street, and they're choosing to park alternatively in parking lots or in other spaces around town. I understand Mr. Gerard's team's working on some of these issues already, so I'm sure he'll fill us in on that, but I wanted to bring it forward because we did get a lot of residents complaining prior to the streetscape being completed and since the streetscape. So that's just basically what I would brought up.
If you can provide an update where your staff is, then we'll open up questions.
Through the chair. So, yeah, so I mean, there's two topics here, so the lines on the parking and then also the ballards. So we believe that the parking, people aren't following the designated lines on the parking mostly because they're trying to avoid the ballards, right? So if you're not wanting to hit your door off the ballard, then you're kind of straddling the parking spaces where most of the ballards are placed in the center of them. So we believe that if we come up with a resolution to the ballards, that will correct some of that parking issue. When it comes to the ballards, we've been working with our consultants. The project is still an active project. It's on maintenance right now, so it's under its warranty period. So we are still working with our consultant on a number of things. But we've been working with them on this too, and we wanted to make, ensure that we had a good opinion from the consultant, and especially from a legal point of view as to what the purpose of those ballards is. So from our discussions with them, and after a significant amount of advice and going back and forth, it's been determined that the ballards are placed there as a visual delineation more than anything. And it's really a delineation between the sidewalk and the parking space. So knowing that those ballards are a visual delineation, as well as a slight obstruction as well. If you hit it, you'll know that you hit it, but they are designed to break away. They're actually, if you hit them hard enough, they're not intended to fully stop a vehicle, but rather they will break away as to not cause further issues in the terms of consultant. So what we're proposing to do, which we're working on now, and we're hoping to have done by the spring, is to remove the problematic ballards, which we believe there's about 10 to 12 of them. Removing those ballards and replacing them with other physical obstructions to delineate between the sidewalk and the parking, which will be made up mostly of planters and bike racks. So that we're intending to do by the spring, and that should resolve the parking issue. Though there still will be a number of ballards in place, mostly to protect the infrastructure and delineate those parking spaces, but we will be removing the ones that are most problematic, and we won't be receiving as many complaints about the door hitting them.
Counsel, Counselor Maguire Blaze.
Thanks, through the chair. Thank you so much for that update, because I was going to come in here and be like, we should just remove them. And so I like to hear that, like, that's coming forward to council, that we should probably remove the ballards that are in the way, and people are hitting with their doors. I think that's great. I love to hear that. Concern is, you're going to replace them with planters, probably concrete, planters and bike racks. I'm hoping that when we do this, we put them further back where the current bike racks are, so they're in between the trees. I know on our walkabout with council and administration, there's probably like two or three feet between where the ballards are and where bike racks currently are. And if the visual, if those ballards were put back three feet, we would never have this issue. If those ballards were in line with those trees, I don't think we would be having this conversation. They're just too close to the parking spaces. So is that the intention, that we're going to put these new ballards, the planters and bike racks, we're going to put them in line with what's already there, further away from the parking spaces? Because I'd hate to take a ballard out and then put a big cement, cement plant pot and have the exact same issue.
The chair. So they won't be concrete planters. They'll be exactly the planters that are out there now, which are the black steel planters. So they'll match the streetscape theme exactly that you see out there. We obviously have to work in consultation with our community services department to ensure that whatever planters we put out there, that they can plant, and that we have the sufficient budget to continue to do more planters. We also want to strategically place the bike racks. So for instance, we have a store that sells bikes and repairs bikes. We'd like to put a bike rack in front of it, for instance, so there's just some more consideration for strategic placement. They are intended to be placed in the amenity area, so between the tree, more between the trees, probably about, probably about two feet off of where the current ballard placement is now.
Any other council members on, Counselor Garen?
Through the chair, to call me. Yeah, I appreciate that report on that. Thinking, anything we try will likely be better and still be trial and error. To Counselor Maguire Blaze's point, if we push even the ballards back a little further, and it seems like a good idea, but I have a feeling that people will just be more comfortable and they'll park even closer so that they can avoid the gutter. So I think you'd still run into a similar problem. They've just parked even closer to it. Even though we're trying to get rid of one problem, it's just, I don't think it's going to really change it too much. But I like the idea of doing something different.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, so on this item, more information to come this spring from our infrastructure department. So with that, we'll move on to our next topic, which was cloud permit instructions, process for basic users, and that was brought forward by Mayor Bondi.
From time to time, I get questions from residents that want something small done, whether it's a fence or a patio, and they're quite intimidated by the iCloud online process. I'm lucky when I built my ADU that the contractors did it all. So just, I've since got an answer, but maybe just for the public too, in case some are still intimidated. There is an option. I think they can go into Gesto and have staff help them.
To Chadwick, if you can provide some options that are available to the residents?
Thank you, CEO Sweet, excuse me, to Mayor Bondi. So you're right in that cloud permit can be intimidating. What the team before you, Development Services, particularly Building Services team, has completed is a revamp of our webpage to provide you with, provide residents with lots of great information. So when folks go to our website, essex.ca, they can scroll over the build banner. They can click onto building and construction. They can even search for building permits. So the building permit landing page has various resources available at folks' fingertips. Particularly that big question, does my project require a building permit? So there's lots of examples there of certain projects that would require a building permit and some that don't. So once that's been determined, and again, if we kind of think about, if you have questions, we can always speak to someone over the phone, or leave a message, or send an email. When a permit is required, then the how-to documents that are also located on our webpage about how to apply for a permit, how to get started creating an account with cloud permit, links to cloud permit support for various tools, even if you're using it for the first time, and then also the show me how button we have on our webpage. Mark Tortola, our manager of communications, has worked with cloud permits communications team directly to also provide the knowledge base, the how-tos, the tutorials, the video tutorials as well, that are linked right to our page. In addition, fee schedules are also updated on our website. And then lastly, our contact information. So if folks are still feeling intimidated, we provide personal assistance at the counter. At Gesto, we have a kiosk that is separate from our building clerk's counter. That kiosk, also, we provide that personal assistance, that one-on-one assistance. We can also do it over the phone with someone. We can also do it via email, even through virtual means. If someone is, for example, in Colchester and is not able to come out to Gesto, we can do, we can assist in any which way possible. I would always encourage folks to check out our webpage. A ton of great information. The video tutorials are quite helpful, and especially the show me how buttons and the how-tos.
Director Chadwick, and I think from that shows that there's a number of options to use cloud permit. So if you're tech savvy, you can use the computer, because then you have seven days a week, 365 days a year. Or if you're not, you can also call or go into the building department. So we'll continue to promote that. But is there any other questions right now, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, through the chair. I've received several calls as well on it. I think a lot of it, though, I mean, I've filled out these permits before, before we had cloud permit. And even those, if you're not familiar with doing a permit, can be daunting, and you're not sure if you're doing it right. You don't want to make a mistake. And I think a lot of that has to carry forward with the cloud permit. And I think, I'm glad to know that we have all those tutorials up, and hopefully we can get our residents to, you know, it gives me some information that I can pass out to the residents to make sure that they they try all those options first, and then that they still can come and see you guys for some help. So it's good information. Thank you for that.
Yeah, that was great information. That was an excellent presentation there for us. Thank you. The only two questions I kind of had left was, is there some form of feedback loop too, that the residents, if they're having a problem or something, that they can like enter and say, hey, this is where I had a problem with, so we could kind of fix that up? And is there FAQ, like a frequently asked questions type section that they could access if they're missing the definition on what they, on what permit requirements are because of the name is something that they don't refer to it as, if they just look up the definitions?
CEO Sweet to Counselor Mayday. Yes, there is a, we'll call it a FAQ. So under the knowledge base function, under cloud permit support, there is lots of features that are kind of the frequently asked questions. So that's available at our fingertips. There is also, the how-tos can also give you the FAQs at the same time while you're running through the process of applying for a permit on how to do it. The question pertaining to feedback, I love it. I love that opportunity for us to hear back. We have, over the course of the past two years since launching, or a year and a half or so, time continues to fly, the full public launch, we've, we soft-launched prior to a full public launch for select developers, where we were able to get that, we'll say 360 or 180 feedback, and say, hey, where is it within that cloud permit tool that you found kind of some, maybe some issues or some obstacles? And we would go into the backend, and we're not code experts, but we somehow became code experts, and somehow, you know, building officials became computer experts. So our building staff were able to kind of work through some of those kinks prior to fully launching. At any time, we love the feedback. For example, just recently, internally, we also saw an opportunity to improve and incorporate Parkland dedication fees according to our new bylaw. So there's lots of ways to continuously improve, and we encourage residents to give us that feedback. And a plug for our contact information, extension 1400 at Town Hall. The email to us, if things are still not working great, you can always email us at building, D E P T, so DEPT, short form for department, at essex.ca, extension 1400 as well. Thank you.
Director Chadwick, the other thing, we're not there now, but it's something probably in the next couple of years. We are starting to explore our virtual chat. So we do have a lot of online services, right? And you kind of see that yourselves when you go on. So we are exploring that. It is down the line, but we're trying to keep up with the trends and make it easier for users. Any other questions on this topic from any council members? Okay, we will move on to the next one, which is what is vision for Colchester Tourism, Residential, etc. That was brought forward by Counselor Hammond.
Thank you, and through the chair. Colchester Tourism, or Residential, or is it both? Over the course of the last two decades, Colchester has managed to reinvent itself, rising out of the shadows of obscurity with a refreshing new look and identity. Its newfound popularity not only complements the flourishing tourist industry that is at its doorstep, it also attracts investments, investments that could potentially spawn new growth, not only for Colchester, but surround communities of Harrow and McGregor as well. These investments also attract developers, real developers, like never before, are interested in the area once considered Harrow's low-rent district. Today, we are being presented with opportunities that come by once in a lifetime. The opportunity to shape the future of Colchester for generations to come. Current grant opportunities promote growth and upgrade infrastructures should be explored and capitalized on. In addition to the benefits of Harold McGregor or the spinoffs related, there are spinoffs-related job opportunities, increased amenities, increased demand for public transit, to name a few. The revelations in building materials and techniques makes running and maintaining a household much more affordable as to the retrofitted cottages that make up the bulk of the current households in Colchester. Bottom line, Colchester has a crumbling infrastructure that is going to have to be addressed sometime. It has areas in its midst that are under service and need servicing. Residents that are opposed to the growth in Colchester are the same residents that oppose the Grove Hotel, the water park, and our SDRs. They have no interest in addressing the housing crisis they helped create. No desire for amenities, no interest in a new high school. No, they are here. Now that they are here, they want nothing to do with anyone wanting to establish or do anything in Colchester. They want to be left alone. I find this mentality self-centered. Nimbys thinking of themselves. The number of emails received with concerns about intensification do not represent the numbers of the people who send them. I understand the situations Ward Three reps are in, especially if they have aspirations for being reelected, the mayor as well. I peace the rest of my fellow counselors to have, that have less stake, to potentially, who can see the benefits being presented not only for the future of Colchester, but the entire community. I ask that you acknowledge these types of developments do not happen overnight, and it takes a big commitment to getting all the ducks in a row, to even get started on a, let alone finish. By that time, the majority of these complaints will no longer be around too.
Counselor Hammond, is there any questions, thoughts on vision for Colchester? Mayor Bondi?
CEO Sweet, I've been on council for a while, and yes, I think many of us do think about being reelected. I've always said there's two types of council members, and sometimes you can be one, and sometimes you can be the other. There are council members that will sit here and say, I know better than you, so I am going to do what I want to do despite what the people think. And there's the other type of counselor that says, I'm going to listen to you, advocate on what you want, because I am your voice. And sometimes it's a little bit of mix of both. But I did go back this weekend, and I watched our council meetings, starting at the beginning of this year, and $63 million is what a new sewage treatment plant is going to take, what's going to cost us with interest in if we don't get any grants. So it's not just anti-development in Colchester, it is smart development. And that's what I campaigned on, is smart development in all areas of our municipality. So I'm looking at, we have flooding issues in Colchester. We have potential erosion issues in Colchester with stuff that we've been learning on the shoreline protection with IRCA. We also have capacity issues. We need to make sure that Hydro One is coming to the table and doing upgrades, because, you know, when the power goes out, they're probably calling all of us, in particular me, more than others. So we have to think about smart development. We also have to consult members of the public. And since I've been on council, I've found that in the past, we haven't done a great job. And we haven't done a great job in the whole entire town, but in particular with Colchester residents. And this last, this last year, we're starting to, we're starting to listen more, which is why we are doing more information on our cold chat, on our official plan by looking at, you know, the, what is it, the CLR? LCR, the Local Comprehensive Review. And once we have more information, then we'll be able to go forward. I'm a big fan of data, and I'm a big fan of public consultation. The Herald News just asked me, you know, what it's like, you know, being mayor, and what does 2025 like? I'm still the same person that got elected in 2010 when it comes to public consultation, because we work for the residents. And if we don't do public consultation right, then we shouldn't be in this seat. Residents in Colchester have had periods of time where they have not felt publicly consulted by council. And we, you know, back in, we did a landscape master plan that was just an abomination. We didn't have enough adequate public consultation. That plan never got adopted. But we have seen a lot of things happen in Colchester. They've just happened gradually. We're seeing wineries. Back 15 years ago, we didn't have the wineries that we have. You know, our beach is also only so big. So we have to find balance, and I think we're working to find balance. I'm very proud of the work that I in particular do to represent Colchester, because I think I listen to them. I encourage council members to listen, listen to them. Whether you're elected in their ward or not, we have a duty to listen to our residents, and that's something that I feel we should do everything we do in every ward, should have public consultation. And if we're going to move in a direction that is doubling the capacity of Colchester, we need to make sure that we are consulting the residents. And that's something that I don't feel we've properly done to this point. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Verbeek?
Through you, Madam Mayor, just me, as you know, always leading with my heart. I felt like some of the comments that were made on this topic were disparaging to some of our residents in Ward Three, and that doesn't sit well with me. And I just want to be clear that all of council does not feel that way, at least not this counselor. And I, for one, am really glad that we're going to be allowing the people of this ward to have a strong voice with the LCR and with the, by keeping our official plan OP, open longer with consultation for the residents, because their input is valued and appreciated.
Thank you through the chair. So the question is, what is vision for Colchester Tourism, Residential, etc., or both? And I think that it, for me, I think it's a little bit of both. I have been talking with IRCA about the developments that are happening along County Road 50. I've talked to them a lot about each individual one. And there are issues in Colchester, and I agree with Mayor Bondi that we do have to grow responsibly, but that doesn't mean that we don't have to grow. I think that saying no to everything in the Colchester area is not the right course of action. I think that, I think for Colchester, it would be really great to see a little bit more residential, especially some newer, some newer homes, some money coming into Colchester, which will help develop the business aspect of it, because the more people who are there, right now, a lot of the beach areas are seasonal. So there's a lot of people who are living there who aren't residents of Canada. Those are their second homes, and so we have to take that into consideration, that for half of the year, Colchester is not full. There's a lot of Airbnbs as well. Those people, those people aren't shopping in Colchester and Harrow. We want people who are going to be there, who's going to support the economy. And those aren't the beach roads right now, because those beach roads are, I'm going to say half, and I know my number's not correct, so don't, don't come at me. But we do know there's a lot of homes that aren't full 12 months a year. So I would like to see some of those developments get done. I would like to see some more money come into Colchester. I'd like to see those restaurants be full every night of the week, some little shops opening up. And I think that that will bring some of the tourism. So we do have the Grove, and I want that to go. I'd love to see some more, you know, kayaking out there and the Lagute, Longavita full. I mean, we have a lot of great things, the wine industry. I'd love to see some kind of a trolley system out there for the wineries that go to Longavita, go to the Grove. I mean, there's a lot of things that can happen to build the tourism and build the residential area. I don't think we can have one or the other. For me, it's both. We need to develop some of those communities. We need to do it responsibly. I think adding, needing right now to put in a new water sewage treatment plant for $63 million, we don't have the money to do it. So for me, that development can't happen until the funds come right. But those other developments that will fit in already into the plan, I don't see why we can't go ahead with those smaller developments. Start building Colchester. Start building those tourism. Start helping our our Colchester Centre grow. So I would like to see that for both the residents, the business, not both, all three, the residents, the businesses, and the tourism, I think, is the smart way to do it. So I'm really excited for the Ambassador Beach. That's the furthest one ahead right now. So I'm excited to see what that happens, who comes to that, what those homes look like, and what that does to the economy. And then build from there. So for me, it's both. I don't think we should say yes or no. I think we should do it. I think we're doing it appropriately. We're not throwing up 400 houses. We're putting up 60. So 60 at a time. Let's see what happens. Let's see how it goes. And just like the Airbnbs, for me, if it becomes too much, our roads are congested, we see more decay, we are, we can't keep up with the system, we go, what, hold on, stop, and we put a halt on it. I don't think it's all or nothing, but I think that we're doing it responsibly. That's my opinion.
Counselor, Deputy Mayor Shepley?
I think councillor Maguire Blaze said it best. I, I agree, I think it's a mixture of all three. As you, my first home was in Colchester, I purchased, so I, I know the area, and I know what it's like to live out there. I, I was a member of that community. I also currently run a business out there. I, I think we just need to do it responsibly, and you know, learning our position here, we were told at one point, we had to do it. Problems was demanding it. We found that that's maybe not necessarily the case. And I'm really looking forward to this Local Comprehensive Review, how it comes back. But I do think it's, we do have to listen to the residents too, at the same point in time. When that review comes back, I think we do, we've encouraged residents to step up and take part, and, and they do. A, a good, a good chunk of the Colchester hamlet does anyway. I know it's not, that's representative of all of Ward Three, but, but that group does step up and take part. They're, they're at every event we hold. They let us know what they want. They maybe don't even always agree with some of the decisions we make, but, but at least they're taking, they're taking that responsibility and showing up and letting us know what they would like to see. So for me, it's a mix of all three, and, and I think as long as we do it responsibly, not, you know, and I, I don't think that was ever the intent. I think sometimes when you look at these big developments that look like they're going to be four hundred homes all at once, that probably was never going to happen all at once, but I understand how that could be scary being from the hamlet. So I, I do take their concerns to heart, and so I, I agree with councillor Maguire Blaze, well put. Thank you.
You know, though we only have a couple of minutes, as we save time in the other ones, we'll extend this. So at this time, councillor Allard.
Ward Three councillor, I try and listen to the people. That's first place I go to is to the people. And development is good at a short term. Doing large developments, it's scaring too many people, and that's not what I want. I want a small development here, here, and here, just to create housing and not scare off the people. The tourism, I think the tourism is great. We have great wineries, great park, great beach, and all the amenities, like the splash pad for little kids. It's all great out in our area, and I don't see as change and spending six hundred thousand or sixty million dollars to put in a water plant is the right thing to do. I think, like everybody's been saying, smart development is the right thing to do. And the Grove and the, the Ingolita haven't been full. I've seen nights where it's just vacant parking lot across the street from me at the Grove. And it's sad, because we want these businesses and people to strive, and I want people to come to our town. So I'm listening to the people, and hopefully the people are being satisfied.
Councillor Mayde.
Yeah, I just, I, I had a whole nother speech set up, but after hearing those comments, I mean, really, that, that warmed my heart. Thank you councillor Verbeek for, for, for standing up and then pointing that out, that not all councillors feel the same. The idea now that we're talking about small metered developments in Colchester is exactly what I believe has to happen. On my first day, when I was appointed here and getting my, my overwhelming orientation, that's the first time that somebody had told me about NIMBY, meaning not in my backyard. But my second day was the first time that somebody told me about NIMBY, meaning not in my budget, and that when we were willing to force a sixty million dollar water plant, that's user-paid on the residents, that only a thousand of them were using it at the time, and it was less than half at capacity, it was totally unfair. And I'm glad that we, that we stopped, we thought about it, tried to, to take a different look at it. And now, as we fill up all the pockets in our beaches that have needed to be filled up, that have been waiting for years, that rate will now be dispersed amongst much more people. Much better way to go. The idea that we do need some growth out there, I will, I will agree with. Yeah, we need growth, and we need it to be year-round, good growth, so that amenities will come. We can't rely totally on, on tourism. But it really needs to be balanced, and it really needs to be metered, and it really needs to be kept in check. And that's what the people in Colchester are saying, and I'm listening to them loud and clear. And I know where I stand on that. Thank you.
Everybody had a comment? Okay. Any last comments on that? Last comments, they'll go to councillor Hammond.
So what I'm hearing now, that everybody's on board with growth. They, they obviously, yeah, I'm going to say the initial proposal that the developer sprung on the residents at his own, at his own initiation. Yeah, that'll send a lot of, but right from the beginning, we knew we couldn't accommodate it because of our infrastructure. We, we looked into accommodating it by increasing our infrastructure. I'd like to point out, I was the one that, that suggested we not pursue applying for a grant to increase our infrastructure at this time. So the way I see it, we're progressing exactly the way the Colchester residents are asking us to, so it goes on.
And then all of council, good discussion on that item. So we'll move forward to our next item, which was OPP billing and policing. That was brought forward by councillor Maguire Blaze.
Thank you through the chair. So this came, this came about when we, there were a few things that brought this about, but mainly when we got that big increase that they were going to increase their wages, and it was going to increase our tax rate quite substantially. I wanted to talk about the options of looking at what else is out there. What, what else can, can we see? We don't really seem to, I, I honestly don't know what we're paying for. We get this ginormous bill, but what does that give us? Does it give us five police officers a year, a day? Does it give us vehicles? We, we as council pay for this. Does anybody on council know what we're actually paying for? I would say no. I don't even know how many hours a month or a year that we are supposed to be getting from our policing service. So I feel like there needs to be some more transparency on what we're actually paying for. And then the actual policing. Now, I do have to say that Mayor Bondi has done a great job since she's been on the board. It seems like every time that there is, somebody's been like, oh, I, I, I need to see more policing here. It seems like there's a police officer there. And I have seen over the past two years, an increase in visibility of our police officers in town. But I still want some answers. I'd still like to know what happened to the, the bike policing that we get, or ATV policing? There's so many things that we're supposed to be getting that I've never seen or never even heard about, and residents haven't seen or, or it's been talked about. So I think I would like to see some more transparency. And I don't know how to get that, because I was on the Police Service Board for four years, and every time I asked a question, it was, well, that's operational, and there was no answers to be given. So it's really frustrating, it was frustrating being a member of that committee, and it's really frustrating to be a councillor to try to get those answers. So that's why I brought it up today.
Councillor Maguire Blaze, and just as a note to council and the public, we recently conducted a community policing survey on satisfaction. And it's based on a previous survey we did two, three years ago, so as a baseline. That report is coming to council next meeting, so you'll see the results from there. To councillor Maguire Blaze, all municipalities are required to have policing. So either you have your own municipal police force or OPP. If you use OPP, you have a billing model. So I'll turn it over to Director Drucevich, she can do a high level of what the billing model is. But one thing we've talked about is actually having a special council meeting, just to go over the billing model, what it covers. So you'll get a high level tonight, but we'll take this even further.
You through the chair. So the OPP contract is derived on two basic principles. Essentially, what they do is they take the cost for the entire OPP service across all of Ontario, and they divide it by a per-property basis. So right now, per MPAC, we have nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-two properties, and we get charged a hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-four cents per property. And that's the same charge that anyone who has the OPP service would get, based on the number of properties in that municipality. They also then take a factor in for the calls for service. So they do how much calls they would get per municipality, and then we pay the proportion of calls that came from our service territory. So that's also another cost factor in our contract. So for the base service, we paid one point eight million dollars. That, we haven't paid it, but that was the twenty twenty-five projected cost. And then the calls for service, the projected cost was one point four million. So we did recently sit on a municipal webinar for why we had that drastic increase, what the reasoning was. And really, they cited it as the settled contract for the unionized employees within OPP came back significantly higher than the initial estimates. So that was really one of the main reasons. Another reason for such a significant increase was, they had previously based their calls for service on COVID stats. We are well out of the COVID pandemic now, and so those estimates were also grossly underrepresented. So those were the two main cost drivers within the service agreement. One other positive thing that was noted in the webinar, just similar to the fact that we received the twenty twenty-five discount, the Solicitor General has committed to looking at a twenty twenty-six discount as well. So I just thought I'd let council be aware of that.
Sure, councillor Maguire Blaze.
Through the chair, and this is my last one, then you guys can have it. But I know this is high level, and I know we talked about doing another one. And it's a one point four four million for calls for service. How many does that get us? How many calls of service are we allowed in a year? How many police officers are we allowed in a day? Like, does Essex only have one car, or do we have two cars? Because we have two, two centers. We should have a minimum of three, in my opinion. Like, but what are we getting? No one can, no one can tell me that. So what am I paying for? What, one point four million dollars, how much is one call of service? And how many police officers does that go? What if we have a call for service that needs one officer and four show up? Do we have to pay for that because four showed up and they only required one? Like, what is their billing model? We know nothing. That information tells me nothing, doesn't answer any of my questions.
I'll turn it over, but councillor Maguire Blaze, we have asked, you were previously on the board, and with the new inspector Lucas came out, when we met with the mayor and deputy mayor and that, he's explained it is operational and safety of the public and also of their officers. Fortunately, the way criminals operate and the technology, you can't promote how many officers or cars now you have on the time. So that's why they're always reluctant to get that. What they guarantee is you always have appropriate policing at all time. So, so with that, I'll turn over to Mayor Bondi.
Thank you, CAO Sweet. It's a good conversation, and I think with the CAO and, and myself, we are, we are meeting with OPP regularly, are asking. The, the Police Service Board is now Lake Shore and Tecumseh, so we have a blended board there. But also, CAO and I, we have a monthly meeting with our staff sergeant, and we're getting a lot of more on-the-ground data. For example, we know that Maplewood Apartments roughly averages one police call per day. And so because I'm on the Housing Committee, I brought that information back to Housing, and now I'm going to see if I can get a meeting between the two of them, look at like a safety, like a community safety, wellbeing audit plan to see how we can improve different little pockets. So hopefully, we can reduce our calls, per, per, calls for service there. Also, another thing, the reason why we are different staff, the OPP are really great when it comes to, we need helicopters, we need dogs, we need boats. You know, we need crisis, crisis, emergency crisis management in a short period of time. We've seen it in Harrow, where there was a fellow with a machete or something, and there was like an OPP officer on every corner. So they are kind of transient, though, and, and that's something that, there's going to be more information to come, hopefully on that. But we do have a staff and sergeant in place now, we're working with him. We were, we were getting some hours on the bike, on the pedal bike. I actually saw one in Harrow this summer, and I chased him down and took his picture. So we may not be able to find, to, to define safe and adequate policing, and everybody expects to sit on their couch and look out their window and see a police officer. Not going to happen all the time. But if you're out and about, like I drive between Harrow and Essex all the time, I see police everywhere. I saw the MTO, I saw the police on Number Three Highway. So we have to look at how safe is our community? You know, our community is one of the safest, and, you know, we need to, as a resident, as a community, if we feel like there's more speeding on our road, we need to call OPP non-emergency to try to get those resources out of there. But just to put it in, I just want to put it in context, this is a little bit of outdated information from two thousand and twenty. LaSalle policing was seven point seven million, that's their own police. Leamington was five point four, that's OPP. Amisburg was five point three, that's Windsor Police. And Lake Shore was five point one, Tecumseh was three point five, Kingsville was three point four, and Essex was three point two. Keeping in mind that a one percent tax increase is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So if we are going to have a discussion about a different police service, we have to be prepared to raise taxes by millions, in, in my opinion. So I prefer to focus our energies on what we have. You know, maybe, you know, as council members, if you have concerns with the police, please email Doug and I, and we'll bring it up weekly, because we are seeing positive, positive relationship building. We got them to recently come to a flag raising, we've asked them to come to flag raisings to increase the visibility. We just recently, we asked them to come to one of our grocery stores, and they were just recently at No Frills. So just send us information, and then we'll, we'll continue to work and build that relationship.
Deputy Mayor Shepley.
Thank you through the chair. So one of the things I've heard most about is our police officers are in Leamington, and they're not in our area. And, and I know I've asked, and, and I believe I've been told that we do see a rebate at some point when, for times when we don't have the amount of officers in the area. So I'm wondering if you could speak to that first, and then we, and then I'll continue on from there.
Through the chair, so I believe the calls for service, when an OPP officer reports to a calls for service, they need to enter a code, which is associated with the area where they're reporting for the call of service. And so that is supposed to be inherent in their billing model, right? So the fact that that service call wasn't coded to Essex and was instead coded to Leamington should bring our proportionate share of the calls for service down, that is what we're told.
That, so then there is, there obviously is some sort of standard that they plan to sort of hold us to with, with our contract. But that, I was never aware of that till recently, so that, that's really good to know. And, you know, some of the things that the, the residents noted to me over, prior to me getting elected, so I didn't have the answers, was why did they not wear the monikers? Why do they not have their town, their municipal, they used to say Essex or Tecumseh on their, on their monikers? They don't do that anymore. And the public feels a distrust there that, oh, this is so they can hide, so when they're in Leamington and Essex is being built for it or whatever. That's why a lot of these questions come up. So it's really, it'd be really helpful, you know, questions that we can put to the OPP board to let that, or OPP themselves, let them know that, you know, it's, it's that mistrust because of those changes, and we don't, we don't know really who's responding to where. But to, to find out that we are getting rebates, that lets me know that they do have a standard that they follow. I'm not opposed to looking for other quotes when, you know, long before our contract is up, I, I think it would, it doesn't hurt to, to go outside and ask. We're not Amisburg, so I don't think it's fair to compare us to Amisburg or LaSalle. Maybe, maybe we would get a reasonable quote from, say, Windsor. It's, it's worth looking into, I, I would be, I would be happy to, you know, when the, to, to look at, to at least have a look at that. So that's, that's all I had to say on that topic. Thank you.
Councillor Hammond next, but prior to that, I know there's been a few times we've mentioned when our contract expires, contract. Just for general information, there is no contract. Again, either you have municipal policing, if you don't, you have OPP. So that's who we're with. What it has is, with the new act that came in a couple of years ago, if you're looking at changing services, you just must give one year's notice. So that, councillor Hammond?
Yes, thank you through the chair. The call to service, the one point four number, I'm guessing that there's some fluctuation from year to year. Can you give us indication what those fluctuations might have ranged from?
Through the chair, so the information that they presented depends on the actual infraction or the calls for service, so they don't have it totaled. I can give you a couple of, of examples. So if it was an operational calls for service, what we saw in two, twenty twenty would have been, and again, this is across the entire Essex County service area. So fourteen hundred and forty-one versus twenty twenty-three, it did rise to fifteen hundred and twenty. So again, it, they have it broken down based on the type of infraction. Overall, it looks like the four-year average was approximately twenty-eight hundred calls for services, and in twenty twenty, it was approximately twenty-seven hundred.
What would be the monetary fluctuation and all that? That's basically what I'm trying to get to.
I don't have that handy.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree that a better breakdown of the billing and what, what constitutes a cost of service call. And what they, you know, if there's different levels of it. Maybe there's better ways that we can get some money, like for 1.4 million dollars, we could probably hire a lot more bylaw officers if a lot of those are bylaw-related calls that, you know, noise complaints or something like that, that the OPP are going out to. There might be a spot there where we could find some cost savings, but definitely something. It's, it's kind of concerning that the cost that Tecumseh paid was 3. something million, and it looks like our cost is $3 million. But there's a great difference between our municipality and Tecumseh's municipality, especially when it comes to population and how much they're going to be paying per, per a lot. So there's definitely someplace that we should be staying with some money.
I can let you know, there is a difference between our bylaw officers, what they can do versus the policing. What I would recommend to the public or any council members on the Town of Essex website, we do have our OPP policing website and it always posts the monthly police reports, which shows your calls of service and the numbers you have that month. So that's something to also look at. Councilor Geron?
Chair, yeah, so just like Deputy Mayor said, I mean, in, in my business world and in my personal world, if I'm not sure about what service I'm getting from a supplier, or I'm not too certain if I'm, if I, if I'm, what I'm paying is, is, is a fair market value or not, then I go out and look for the pricing. So I have no issue with that either. I don't think the Town of Essex has ever explored that. To make a blanket comment that if we got another service besides OPP, if it's going to cost us more money, it's maybe not factual at all without knowing. So until we actually make that decision as a council, we want to explore that, then we really don't know. I, I know Councilor McGuire Blaze is talking about service, but it's also talking about, I mean, look at our garbage. We may not even get anybody that would, would want to tender, would want to even bid on it. But we won't know unless we ask, so I would be okay with having further discussions regarding around that matter. And then what you, what we're getting for, what we're paying, I have no idea. I mean, I don't know how many councils even know, when they give a ticket out, how much of that we keep. Like, no one knows. So, so, I mean, I would be on board with having further conversation on exploring opportunities or if there are realistic opportunities of looking at other services provided by, other than OPP.
Thank you, Councilor Geron. And as mentioned at the beginning of this topic, we'll look at scheduling this quarter in more detail in terms of the OPP billing model, calls of service. And I think at that time, once you see more information, if there's further direction by council, we can look at that time. Yep, Councilor McGuire, please.
Just last remarks, like, when this, when OPP was sold to, to council, like, what did that look like? Maybe, maybe the answers are there. I wasn't on council then, so maybe when the OPP idea was sold, maybe there was answers there, like, you're going to get this, this, and this. Like, maybe that's something that we can take a look at and digest. And then Mayor Bonnie mentioned she sees OPP on Highway 3. Yeah, you do, because we don't pay for Highway 3, it's a provincial road. So we're not paying for those OPP on Highway 3, and a lot of people will see our OPP on the county roads, especially the bordering roads like the Arner Town Line. That's because they're sitting there waiting for a call for either Essex or Kingsville, so they can go to both. So that's what, like, if you look at their model, we are working as a, it almost is a county policing. And what are we actually paying for? I feel like a lot of times, maybe we're paying for Leamington's policing because you do see policing on, on the border roads, but you, you rarely see them driving up a concession. But for sure, for sure, if you're driving past Heritage, the Heritage Park or whatever that is, Heritage Village, there's probably going to be a police officer there and they're waiting for a call, either Leamington, Kingsville, or Essex. And, and that's my problem with the whole policing OPP problem, so thank you.
Bonnie, before I do that, just to Councilor McGuire Blaze, if you go past on Arner, that's an old Essex police car, just so you know. They got you, word.
Back in 2020, which is where I have that screenshot from, the Leamington Mayor Hilda McDonald did the, had the same discussion that we're having now. And so I'd like to see their report too, I'm sure we could find it. It's 2020, the Leamington, you know, request for tender, and it did show, like, I would bet my cats on it that no matter what we do, we're going to go up. And I love my cats a lot, we're going to go up, it's not going to be the same price. So the other thing is, I just wanted to point out for the rest of council members of the public, the police service boards, our meetings are now online and they're live streamed, so you can see them on our website and the Tecumseh website. None of us were on council before, when, when we went to OPP, none of, none of us here, so I can't answer that question. But I do want to say it's a big conversation, and it's a big conversation to be had, and I urge council to really think about, is this in our, is this in our strategic plan, is this in our priority? Because when we go out there and we say we want to look at pricing, I have learned from the Leamington experience, the morale of the officers that currently worked with the Leamington area OPP, the morale went down. And that's something, because they didn't know if they had job security. So I, I have worked a lot with a lot of the OPP officers that we do have here. So I don't want to just say, hey, let's go shop around, because there are consequences to that. So we have to think about a balanced approach, and if it's really something we really want to do, is this on our bucket list this term? Is it really that pressing? Is it really that bad? Because my answer is no, but we also haven't got the results, which are coming, so that'll be good.
And Councilor Geron?
Thanks, through the chair, just a couple of comments, I mean, there's nothing wrong with paying a little bit more for policing if it checks all the boxes that, for our residents, it checks all our boxes for council. Right now, we're not, we're maybe a little unsure about what the model is and where, where our money's going. If we were to look elsewhere, and it has nothing to do with OPP not doing a good job now or, or whatever that, but we might be in a situation where we're willing to pay a little bit more if we know what we're paying for and we feel that that's what our residents want. So I'm, that's why I would be open to, minded to at least exploring the opportunities. Leamington got their pricing from Chatham and they didn't like their pricing. Leamington's service area might be totally different than Essex. They might have way more situation they deal with down there than we do in Essex. Just like it's some insurance companies are favorable in some areas, in other cities and municipalities, they're higher. So I'm, I want to explore it, and I think it's a great topic you brought up.
Again, great conversation, truly the intent of these meetings. We'll move on to our next one, which was rural cellphone service from Councilor Maydy.
So I get a lot of phone calls about really poor cellphone service out in Colchester. And so I, I had some questions on if we ever surveyed the residents, like we ever put out a survey on people's cellphone quality and if they have access to cellphone use. Or their landlines even, because there are some areas where their landlines are even worse because they're very old landlines that aren't, aren't kept. I mean, we just had a whole thing with the bellboxes and how we had to ask them to come in and fix a whole bunch of those up. So my, my first thing is if we've ever had a survey done for that, and what it would take to get a survey done for that. And then if we've ever tried to collaborate with any of the cellphone providers, something like the SWIFT programs or something like that, where we get a provider to come in with, with provincial money, if we ever looked into doing anything like that. So that's, that's where this topic came up from.
My knowledge, we haven't did a survey just in terms of cell service. But I am going to ask a question to our manager of economic development. So we have worked with SWIFT and different things for broadband, so maybe Nelson, if you can expand on some of those items.
Through you, CEO Sweet. We've worked with a variety of different internet service providers to kind of get more information from them in terms of future plans for broadband. I think we'd be willing to have those same conversations about rural cell service if it's an issue. I think there are tools online on the Government of Canada website to kind of showcase where there are gaps in rural cell and broadband service, so I'd probably leave that with administration for us to do some digging and see kind of where those gaps are. I know on the broadband, broadband front, we've done a lot of work with, with SWIFT and with different levels of government to bring that funding in for ISPs to bridge the urban rural divide when it comes to internet service. And there's large projects happening right now with ExplorerNet and other service providers to kind of get rural folks online and have somewhat decent internet service. I think we can do some investigative work on the, on the rural cell service front as well.
There's also Windsor Essex Connect, I think that's the proper name. Don't know a lot about their scope, but I know they're looking to get cell service in different areas. That could be maybe someone we reach out to too, to see what they do and what their service is. Director Druck?
We, we actually have been contacted recently by a cell service company, a telecommunit, company looking to install a tower in the Harrow Colchester area, so they're seeking property right now. But whether that comes to fruition or not, I can only, I can only tell you that we know that they're looking for property.
Yeah, I can state for a fact that the service over the years has improved dramatically. I know when I was operating down there, Colchester was a hotbed for people to get lost for a day. They didn't want to get a hold of, so it has improved dramatically. Since then, I do notice that winds coming out of the south, my cellphone will roam. Or, or even by the river, it does the same thing. It's an area that we're in, obviously they have stronger signals over in the states than we do here, so there are areas that we can be upgraded. I know that since that tower was put in by the Water Works, that the service has improved dramatically and it continues to do so.
Any other comments, questions on that? Okay, we will move on to our next item, which was vacant residential and commercial tax, and that was brought forward by Councilor Geron.
Thank you, through the chair. Yeah, so I was always been pushing to see if there's something we can do with respect to the commercial vacancies. And then back in June, Mayor Bonnie brought my attention to the city of Windsor, they implemented a vacancy tax on residential homes as well. So that's why it's tied vacant residential and commercial tax. So they, they put this in place to address the affordable housing shortages. And, and I like that idea for the housing side of it, I'm not sure if Essex really has that many residential units that are unoccupied. But on the commercial side of it, there certainly is some commercial and/or mixed commercial residential buildings that have been sitting there for some time that are unoccupied for one reason or another. And I just wanted to get out the conversation to see what tools are in place, what we can or can't do in terms of trying to get some sort of a higher tax rate on these commercial buildings and maybe residential buildings that are perhaps intentionally just sitting vacant because they can, and it's cheaper to keep them vacant and pay a lesser tax perhaps than to, to occupy them, I guess, but I just wanted to have the conversation.
Go to Director Drucevich and kind of update council where we are now.
Through the chair. In 2017, the government did allow, they prescribed a change within the municipal act specific to residential units, basically allowing municipalities the option to implement a surcharge or a vacant tax. I would have to do a bit more investigation to see if it, if it is even permitted for commercial. The preliminary research that I did, I couldn't find a commercial rebate or tax program. I believe the main reason for this was that in 2018, we previously had a rebate program. We were actually giving a tax incentive for these units. So if you had a, a commercial unit that was vacant, you actually got a reduction in your property taxes back in 2018. So the county made strides to eliminate that rebate, and that was official in 2018 for Town of Essex properties. So I think that was the first step in trying to, you know, implement a tax of some sort by removing that discount. So, so I can confirm that that was done. This is in the preliminary stages of the county, so the local treasurers group I've brought forward, because it has been discussed several times at our council, the need for a report, so we should see a type, some sort of report from the county this year. I, I'll make the recommendation that commercial be considered as well in that report. They're starting with residential, they're starting to use our water billing data to see if we actually do have a vacancy problem when it comes to residential properties. Initial glance of the program, the biggest concern in the City of Toronto's rollout, I haven't consulted a city of Windsor, was the compliance side of it. So property owners, they use a self-declaration method right now, saying that you have to self-declare if you have a vacant property, and then we will charge you this tax. So you obviously can put two and two together that it's going to be difficult to get people to self-declare to pay a tax, right? And so what that means is the need for bylaw enforcement officers, and it's basically complaint-driven. So if property owners notice a vacant property, they've been asking them to call in and, and report or call in on their neighbors essentially. And then bylaw enforcement reports to the property to ensure that the, it's within the parameters of their bylaw. So for example, city of Windsor uses 183 days vacant. So there is a lot of administrative work and likely full-time staff that would be required to be dedicated to it. So that, that is why the report's essential, right? To see, here's the potential tax revenue you could get, here's the potential cost of the program. And that way council has a fulsome picture to, to weigh whether it's a program that we want to proceed forward with.
Pitch, Mayor Bonnie?
Sweet, so the deputy mayor and I have started initiating bimonthly meetings with the County of Essex CAO. So if you think of any county issues that you want us to discuss with her, please let us know. So we just met with her last week and she wrote back. So they're starting to gather data from local tax departments to ascertain the number of potentially vacant properties. The program is set up, we require each local to annually identify, update, update and tax vacant properties. Feedback so far suggests capacity doesn't exist for this work, so increased staffing hours would need to be budgeted for each local to establish and maintain this program. Only major cities have implemented this penalty to date. Data is skewed using water billing data to identify homes with water, but no usage as an indicator that the property may be vacant. But that includes known cottages, which is overstating results. Refinement, like, it's just a lot of, it's a lot of work for our locals to, to find out. Melissa's tax report policy, which will seek council's direction, county council's direction on vacant tax implementation will be coming soon, they said in February. So as soon as we get this, we can flip it to council and you can give us feedback if you know. So what's going to happen at the county is she's saying that, you know, workload is high. So if there's no council appetite, meaning county council appetite, then they, they need to know, so they don't spend any more time on this. But it does sound like it's one of those questions, is the juice worth the squeeze? And I'm not saying it's not, I'm just saying, is the juice worth the squeeze?
Blaze?
Thank you, through the chair. I'm glad to hear that we're talking about it, at least the residential side. I would like to see county talking about the commercial side because I, I do think that's a problem. And I think it's bananas that they're asking for self-reporting. The City of Toronto, for fact, the City of Toronto does the same thing, it's self-reporting. But if you don't report by April 31st, you automatically get the vacancy tax added to your tax bill. So if you don't report, then you, then you're automatically vacant, and you automatically get this tax. And then it's on you to approach the administration and fix it. So I would go with that approach, if you don't fill out the form and everyone gets the form with their tax bill in eight, in January, you get, you get the form and it says you have till now, and then they follow it up with an email three weeks later, don't forget to fill out your vacancy tax form. If it's not filled out by April 31st, you automatically get it. So I would pose that to county council and say, that's way better option and far less work than having bylaw officers go out there and knock on doors. Might be more work the first year, everyone calling and be like, what's this vacancy tax? But we know that that's the issue, same with the water billing that we just went through, it'll, it'll be a change for people, but I would, I would post it that way. And I would, I really do think adding the commercial vacancy tax is a great idea. It will push our building owners to reduce rent rates, which is what we need to see. So if they can't get somebody in there because they're asking $3,000 a month for a 500 square foot space, that's too much. Like, we're Essex, we're not Toronto, and a lot of our buildings are owned by people in Toronto who are used to getting that. And they just think Essex is a hick town, pardon my language, but, and we're not. It's just, we don't have, we don't have the population that Toronto has, and you can't compare Toronto, Toronto rates to Essex rates. So I would be all for that, and I would do whatever we needed to do to see that go to, through county, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Shepley?
Uh, I guess I'm not the popular one, I'm not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be for it. I wonder um, maybe if uh, uh, our economic development officer might be able to speak to how many vacant commercial properties he's aware of. I, I'm not aware of that many in the community that we would want to go through all this paperwork to uh, report, self-report, or do the Gestapo reports where we tell on everybody. I, I'm just not, I'm not a fan of it at all, I'm just wondering if Nelson maybe would have a, a number of vacant properties he's aware of.
Um, through you, uh, CAO Sweet, I, I don't have a number of total vacant commercial properties across the municipality in terms of downtown vacancies compared to uh, like Essex and Harrow. I think we have, we're saying in about a 5% of total units uh, vacant in both Essex and Harrow. The issue, and maybe Counselor Geron can clarify, is that there are a few um, bad apples that have been vacant for a very long time. Um, and at this rate probably won't be filled for a very long time. Um, the other units that are vacant, um, they're turned over and they're filled. Um, but there are a few in the downtown specifically that have been vacant a very long time, uh, and haven't been filled.
But uh, I, for that reason, especially that, then it's really just targeting a couple of people that don't want to uh, rent their building out, and they would probably pay the difference to not rent it out, because they, they just do not seem to. And it, and it's a very, very small amount, I think it's a lot of, lot of effort to target, and it would be just to target specific properties really, because for the most part, most, most commercial property owners do want to see their buildings leased and rented out, so I think, I, I don't know, I, I, I wouldn't be in favor of it, I, I mean, I welcome the discussion when it comes to us to discuss as a, as a council, but my, my opinion would be no.
Through Chair, yeah, good discussions uh, on the commercial side of it. I, I guess what do we have in place bylaw-wise, like if somebody has a commercial building um, or a mixed commercial with residential, and it's abandoned, or um, yes, they're paying a tax, but it's just a, a lower tax pass because it's abandoned or because it's vacant. Um, or perhaps there's a work order on it. What do we have in our toolbox that can motivate these people to put the money into the building to get it? If we just let them just continue to pay a low rate, then there's no motivation for them. We did, we had passed incentives, uh, it worked for some, didn't work for others, just want that discussion, because we get asked all the time, why this building, why that building, how come it's vacant? And uh, always say as well, a guy owns it and doesn't want to put any money into it, or a girl owns it, doesn't want to put any money into it, and that's where we're at with it. So I'm just looking for anything we can look into to try to see what other municipalities may be doing when it comes to the commercial side of it. Um, is it a higher tax rate, is that going to be enough? It's like having a piece of property with no building on it, and it sits there for 20 years, or having a piece of property with a building on it. Some places, some municipalities, it's a different rate. So, good discussion, thanks.
Um, looks like next steps will be getting information from the county. Um, Director Drucevich does sit on the working groups, so she's kind of heard, can bring some of the concerns forward to that group as well. Any other final comments? Okay, we'll move on to our next item, which is economic development priorities. Be a commercial area, industrial, or specific areas such as County Road 50, and that was brought forward by Mayor Bondi.
We just looking to have a high-level conversation with council colleagues on, you know, we have uh, one economic development officer, and uh, their, their focus really cannot be at all places at all the time, although we, we demand that, and, but just wanting to see, we've had the County Road 50 CIP for some time, and before we had the, the Harrow Center CIP, we had the Essex Center CIP. Do we, do we want to shake anything up? Do we want to at some point remove the County Road 50 CIP? Has it done, has it done its job and focus our energies back on, you know, uh, institutional, industrial, commercial, back in our urban cores? Or, you know, what is, what is the focus? Where's our economic priorities as a council and administration?
Any comments on this topic? Well, uh, Nelson, do you want to maybe some feedback on?
Through you, uh, CAO Sweet, just to uh, follow up on the CIP discussion. At least, um, I think you bring up a good point about the commercial and industrial side of things. We've had the Essex CIP, we've had the Harrow CIP. We also have the County Road 50 CIP, which historically has done well. Um, there's a report coming to the next council meeting on the 2024 uh, update of that, of that CIP program, which will give council some more indication of um, the uptake of that CIP program. Um, the other thing, project plan for 2025, uh, through a grant that we received through the Rural Economic Development Program is a CIP study for industrial uh, type development throughout the town of Essex. Um, so we got some funding from the province to undertake that study, so that'll kind of guide us in terms of future municipal incentives. Uh, but every other type of development in terms of what we do on an ec- from economic development standpoint is when we get inquiries about development or about um, a specific investment, um, we facilitate those conversations based on what properties are zoned. Um, the incentives and the conversations about uh, grants or additional types of funding that are out there are always had with our department and the investors that we speak to. Um, but on the municipal incentive side of things, there is a CIP study coming specific to industrial growth.
And maybe for the public, can you define CIP? I know we use acronyms a lot.
Uh, CIP is a Community Improvement Plan, which uh, subsidizes or incentivizes um, growth. You can have one specifically for um, rural development and agritourism, which we have in County on County 50. Uh, you can have them for uh, programs for downtown uh, development, which we've had in Essex and in Harrow in the past. Uh, so you've seen, you know, businesses improve the facades of their storefronts, or at the patio, or uh, create an accessible entrance, so we funded that in the past as well. Uh, on the industrial side of things, um, the programs that we've seen on the pa- in the past really revolve around um, development charges, tax increment financing, um, and how we go about implementing that, and the feasibility of implementing that will all be decided by a study which should, should be launched by, uh, or out for RFP by, let's say, Q2 of 2025.
This is an important topic for every municipality, because you always hear for residential development, right? You want more homes, going to bring in more taxes, but your residential development also uses your largest service, your largest cost. So it is very important, if the more commercial industrial you can bring in, they actually help your tax base for your residents paying, so it's a very important topic where council wants to focus their efforts. Uh, Counselor Matey?
Sure, um, yeah, I think that um, uh, you know, I, I heard quite a bit from a lot of people that when we go through our official plan, they'd like to see a little more commercial space on the main street in County Road 50, they're going through Colchester. Uh, maybe opening it up from like Erie Road all the way to our marker or something like that, to allow for more opportunity for people to, to set up uh, some commercial venues there. Um, also, again, the, the idea of a trolley or something along County Road 50. Um, you know, I think that's a great idea, I think that, that we should be looking towards stuff like that. I also think that the um, the residents in Lake Shore now that are going to be part of the pilot program for the uh, golf carts. Um, I'd really like to see some kind of low-speed electric vehicles being offered, maybe sell the County Road 50 or something like that, that'll connect our, our great um, tourist attractions already, like the wineries in Longavita and stuff like that. Um, and, you know, allowing the, the residents to, to move around and maybe open up to some kind of farmer's market or uh, you know, um, some kind of ecotourism bu- businesses that, that kind of promote the local culture and the uh, you know, the great place Colchester is, um, before we look at something industrial in that area, um, definitely much more of a commercial thing.
Um, want to make sure I was clear, it wasn't looking industrial in every area. There could be like in Harrow, we have an industrial park, you're going to have an Essex Center industrial, and maybe more commercial in your other areas, so it doesn't have to be everything everywhere. Um, Counselor McGuire, please.
Uh, thank you through the Chair. So I've said it since I started here, that I would love to see some more industrial growth um, in, in Essex. Um, and I don't know, I don't know how our efforts, and I know there is the, the park coming coming across the highway, um, but I would like to see some more development happening. Um, we do have industrial properties that are available um, along South Talbot that are not, that are not being filled. Um, there's the new industrial park that's coming, um. And I, I know there's property in Harrow that is available, um, industrial property in Harrow that's available. So I would like to see some efforts, and maybe their efforts are going, I just don't know about them. Um, some efforts going out to try to attract industrial businesses to Essex, what can we do? We've attracted tourism to Colchester, um, we're attracting residential, residential developments like we have in, in Essex Center here, um, and in Harrow Center. Um, what are we doing to attract industrial to Essex? What, what is, what does the brochure look like? Like what are we offering? What are we, in Essex Center, do we have properties that are shovel-ready? Like that's where we need to be two years ago. Where are we now? So we're already, for me, we're already behind. We should have had shovel-ready properties two years ago, and we have, there has been a boom in Windsor of economic growth, and we've seen none of it. So why, wh- what, why haven't we seen that? What are we missing? I think that we need to focus on that, because industrial industry pays our taxes. So yeah, we can keep shelling out more taxes, more taxes, but if we get a couple of good um, industrial buildings here, that will help lower our residential taxes substantially. And I know that ha- bringing in, in industry to Essex is, comes at a cost. We have to pay for the, we have to pay for the infrastructure, we, we have, there's a lot of things that have to happen beforehand to get the ground shovel-ready. Um, but I think, in my opinion, we need to invest in that, because that is investing in ourselves and our future. Because without ec- without that industrial growth, we will just dwindle away and become a bedroom community, and we don't want to be a bedroom community. Bedroom communities have high tax rates, because that's all we have. So for me, I would love to see more happening to entice um, those industries, those industry companies to come here. I would like to see a better commu- I'm saying better, please don't take my, my words negatively. I would like to see a, a better relationship between InvestWinds or Essex and the county, InvestWinds or Essex and, and Essex. Um, because they have the big names, and if we can get those properties shovel-ready, and we can work with you know, developers and other organizations like Invest Windsor Essex, I think, like, we're the center of everything, we're 15, 20 minute drive from everything. Like why we're not already is, I think, because we don't have shovel-ready property, and I think that's the reason. So Windsor's already expanding, they're using every pocket that they can for, for industry right now, and um, you, you see they're, they're already taking away parts of uh, the Windsor Airport, because that's what they have, so they're building on the Windsor Airport right now, they're building lands and adding roads. So we're, it's coming our way, and we should be shovel-ready. So that's where I would like to see some focus. We've done a great job, I think Colchester's doing a great job with their tourism. Um, I think our two downtown center cores look beautiful, um. I would like to see a little bit more, thanks.
Just a few comments on that. Um, before the new year anyways, we did meet with Invest Windsor, they came as a survey, so they came in and met with staff to kind of, how can we build relations? And actually, next week, they've also with their new COO, Mr. Andrews, we have a meeting myself, uh, Mayor Bondi to meet, so we'll focus some of that as well. Um, I have, or maybe tomorrow, Deputy Mayor Shepley?
I can wait.
Sweet, uh, great comments, uh, Counselor McGuire Blaze. Uh, great news, tomorrow at the Committee of Adjustment, the Inspiration Industrial Park along Highway 3 is being presented for decision-making to create lots, those industrial-sized lots. So although the project has taken some time, what sometimes um, i- is not evident is the underground work that needs to be studied, needs to be approved by the town, sometimes MTO or other parties, sometimes IRCA. Uh, so there, there really is a lot that has to happen before a shovel can be, and as you know personally, um, can be in the ground. So uh, we take it very seriously in Development Services, as well as with all of my colleagues, as well as uh, up uh, through the CAO's office. The Inspiration Industrial Park will see six lots being created for uh, purposes of uh, large-scale industry. We have direct connections with various investors. So those investor connections, as well as what we consider site selection as well, those conversations continually happen. They also happen with um, Invest Windsor Essex, but also on a local economic development scale too. So there we do have a lot of eyes on that park. We also are working with our infrastructure team to get those services that have been brought across Highway 3, but to the park, so that I understand is happening this year in order to get those shovels in the ground um, on the actual park itself. There's also a fully serviced industrial park in Harrow. And then as you mentioned earlier, Counselor McGuire Blaze, there are some vacant highway commercial industrial properties along short, um, South Talbot Road as well. Uh, so we do highlight those properties when we do have businesses, but we also take the initiative and contact various parties and indicate that we are open for business, and we do have a lot of opportunity there. Uh, that is a part of our business retention and expansion strategy, and continually to work towards um, works towards that. One other plug that I'd like to share as a refresher to council. So as a part of the county official plan, a couple of years ago, uh, through the county's of population forecast, it was identified that as for, uh, as a community grows in terms of population, so too does its need for employment lands. So in the eyes of the province, employment lands specifically mean industrial property, not commercial. So there is a need to expand our town's settlement area for purposes of employment lands. So what we're doing is we are drafting policies on our new official plan to identify the certain criteria to allow for redevelopment, excuse me, uh, redesignation of any lands for industrial growth. And that criteria will likely look like a long Highway 3. We do have a lot of uh, vacant, fully serviced land in Harrow, so we do see a lot of potential along Highway 3. We also have, continue to have the conversations uh, with our um, our neighbor, the town of Lake Shore, municipality of Lake Shore, on what their future looks like as well, and partnering and potentially collaborating with uh, with both municipalities together hand in hand, uh, depending on what their needs are, uh, and ours as well. So thank you, hope that gives you a little bit of insight.
Thank you, any other comments on that topic? Counselor Hammond, you have the last comment.
Um, thank you, Kate, for bringing this up, and uh, Director Chadwick for the update, uh, uh, I was wondering wh- wh- what was going on out there, and uh, yeah, I'm happy to hear that it is progressing.
We'll go to the next item, it was bus, bus pickup locations and crossing guards, brought forward by Counselor McGuire Blaze. I added the crossing guard point, and I'll speak to that after you, and also talk about the bus locations.
Through the Chair, this actually kind of goes with um, sidewalks as well. Um, so we had, uh, I've had a few, few complaints about um, where buses are being picked up, and I know that we talked about it as council before, um, but this is just another opportunity to let the public know that we don't really have a say um, in where the school board decides to pick up their students. Um, but I feel like there could be a conversation where we could ask that they take a look at where um, where pickup spots are, choosing pickup spots that are accessible. Um, and so one of, one of the problems I know is where there's no sidewalks. So having kids walk on the side of the road, walking in ditches, walking on, you know, in neighbors' lawns, and I had to do it as well, living in the county. Um, but maybe there's, maybe we can come to a good compromise where we have the conversation with the busing company, maybe they just are not aware. I know that one of, um, through the busing company, they, I'm looking at uh, sending my kids to high school next year. They're either going to have to take a bus to Villanova, or they're going to have to walk to Essex, the Essex High School. Uh, their walking trail takes them down alleys and dirt roads in Essex Center. So um, like, for me, looking at that, I'm going, okay, well, if my kids have to walk to school and they have to walk down this dirt road that's not accessible, and right now they can't walk down that road. Um, so, but that, that would be their route, so down there and then down an alleyway, for me, that seems, that seems ridiculous, and they do it because it is is the closest for them to get there, because if my kids lived five houses to the, to the east, then they would get bussed. So what they do is instead of having to walk around the block, which is what they would normally have to do in a typical day, and which would add three kilometers to their walk, they don't have to do that, well, they can just walk through this dirt road, walk down this alley, and then they, that three kilometers isn't there, and we don't have to get them a bus. So that is like the issue, there's lots of parents who are having to deal with that. Um, little kids having to be picked up, you know, across a busy street, and there's no one out there, and cars are not stopping, which is a car issue, but um, maybe there's just a commu- like something we can talk about with the busing company on where their pickup locations are and the safety of our kids.
So just to add to that, um, before Christmas, council gave direction to send a letter to- So just to add to that, before Christmas, council gave direction to send a letter to the bus company to kind of see what their criteria is. Once we receive that, I think we can come back to, may answer a few of those questions. Uh, before I open up, why I added crossing guards, very similar. A lot of the public does not realize crossing guards fall under the municipality. We have to pay for them and everything. It's not the school board. So when they pick their bus dropouts or where they build a new school, they don't think of where sidewalks are or crossing guards. I'm going to ask if our deputy clerk maybe update a little bit on crossing guards. So council also has some information on that and then we can talk about the two items.
Sweet to council. So crossing guards are regulated through section 176 of the Highway Traffic Act. Just for anybody, if anybody's wondering. The Ontario Traffic Council also publishes, I don't know if anybody can see this, this guide that sets out all the parameters for where the crossing guard should be located. So in Essex Center, I know that there's been some talk about why is there one here? Why is there not one there? It also, it matters as to, and I'll quote on here where it says, there, the, the municipality set out the threshold for minimum trap, minimum students that cross that, right? So that's up to us to determine whether it's thirty, whether it's three or whatever it is. In conjunction with that is whether, what the exposure is. So is there a traffic light? Is there a, is there a stop sign? Is it a four-way stop sign in how all that works? In addition to that though, what is the, they refer to it as the conflict between the vehicles and the students. So yes, there may be a, so I'm going to use holy name. There's a, a start, a stoplight there, right? There's a four-way stoplight. The volume in that warrants, the volume of traffic with the buses and the parents coming warrants a crossing guard there. However, another intersection that's similar with a four-way light may not have the same density. That's what we look at. So it's not that we just say, okay, here, here and here, there is an actual subjective process to it. Okay.
He also was, again, it's municipality costs. School boards do not contribute to the costs for crossing guards. So with that, any comments from council on bus locations or crossing guards? Mayor Bondi?
I did send to council a copy of the letter just, just now because we did get it today. I think it has to do with the school boards and how they manage things, but I think the school boards are also between a rock and a hard place because I don't, I have not seen their levy increase on our tax dollars in, in many years. And maybe Director Drucevich can, can confirm that, but they are being asked to do more for less or they're making cuts. They're making cuts in everything. And busing is just going to be another cut. They're going to have, you know, a whole bunch of young kids walk to one spot and try to pick them up rather than having multiple spots. They're going to do what's convenient and cost efficient for them and they're not going to really care as much as about our children. So maybe, rather than just going to the school board, maybe we also lobby the province that they need to fund school boards adequately. Because if, if they don't, like, they've had, I don't know, Director Drucevich, can you speak to any of the last couple of years, the school board levy?
Through the chair. So I can confirm that for the past three years at least, there has been a, no increase to the municipal education portion of taxes.
Any other comments from any other councillors? Councilor Maydey?
Uh, through you. Yeah, I can get that there's some kind of shortfalls within the board and they had to look for places to cut, sure. But it should never be at the safety of children. I shared a few photos of one of the residents in my ward that, that got ahold of me and kind of sparked the whole motion to, to look at this when I heard that there was other councillors that were having the same problems. And it was great that we sent that letter out. But they took pictures of this last snowstorm that they had and they are living on County Road Fifty and their choice is to walk in the snow-covered shoulder of the road because we can't plow it down to the gravel, obviously. Or, you know, in the kind of danger zone between the road and gravel, that gets a little bit better. And it's right at a curve. So there's a curve with cars traveling eighty kilometers an hour on less than ideal roads and they're walking between a ditch and plowed area on that road. It's horrible. I, I would not want to be that person to have to make that choice every morning, walking their kids that, that, that area. So I think we do need to do some more, maybe even. I was happy to hear that you're meeting with the county CAO now. Seeing as it's a county road, maybe we can talk to them and see if they have any ideas on it. And if we're looking for provincial money with AMO coming around, maybe we can form something there to bring to them and see if we can't find some provincial money from them to help with this problem. Uh, because it's a problem. Sure. It might be a funding problem. So let's, let's, let's try to help them find some funding then. Um, but something, we need, we need to correct this problem.
Councilor Hammond?
Through you, Chair. Uh, I just want to say it stives me that they're still using full-size buses to transport a few kids out in Harrow and Colchester that are being bussed to other communities for their school system. I've yet to see a full bus. I don't know why they're still using those big things that surely just got to be way more expensive than the smaller buses that I'm sure would accommodate the number of kids that are being bused out of Harrow and Colchester.
Any other comments? Councilor Allard?
I know that I worked on school buses for a period of time and I know that they've said that pickups are determined by the province, not by the local bus company. So good thing sending it through to the province and making sure they're aware.
So as mentioned, a letter has been sent to the bus company based on directive for council. So once we get a response back from them, we will definitely update. With that, we will move to our final topic of the night, discuss moratorium on STRs. That was brought forward by Councilor Hammond.
Yes, and I just want to start off by saying the whole idea of the moratorium was to put a pause into any more being established and getting a foothold on what was turning into an out-of-control problem. And since that time, we have done that. We've installed some controls and initiated some some perimeters in which to follow and some recommendations as well as some enforcement is being established. Having said that, I think it's fair to say that we have since gotten a better handle on the short-term rental situation. Mr. Peash was so gracious to send me a, a survey that was done recently on the short-term rentals. I, I appreciate it because it was, you know, to, to confirm his concerns and obviously they're the same concerns that prompted the moratorium. Other thing that this survey or analysis has pointed out is that what we're doing is right. We're, we're, we're on the right course as far as getting control of the short-term rentals. And one thing it doesn't say is that the moratorium should be indefinite. So I think it's time to re, re, revisit opening up the short-term rentals as far as license C with the, but we need to also establish the perimeters in which we're going to do that. And I think it's time to start the discussion for that.
Hammond? So before I open up, Director Chadwick provide an update to council?
Sweet. So all great points, Councilor Hammond. I would just like to remind council of a report that, and via presentation that was presented to council in October of 2023. So at that time, we had presented a one-year update to council. It had been a year since the licensing platform had been opened. We wanted to provide council kind of a point in time. As you recall, the STR licensing bylaw was passed with a, we'll say a three-year timeframe for licenses to remain active. And so we had committed at the time to provide council with that one-year update. At that time, council did not direct administration to lift the moratorium. In other words, any STRs established in residential zoning districts prior to May of 2022 were, we'll say grandfathered in, of course, requiring a license and various regulations that needed to be met. But essentially, any new residential, sorry, any new STRs in residential, although not permitted by right, could still proceed with and we'll say propose a zoning amendment to, to seek council's permission. P.S. Any STRs in commercial and agricultural and green districts are permitted, permitted by right without the moratorium. So what we had committed, because council had, did not direct administration to lift their moratorium at the time, we had committed to reviewing that moratorium after the three-year period. Understanding that this is not the realm, I believe, for a direction, but that was always our intent, was within the three years or prior to that three-year expiration date, we would provide a council, a council with another report on this is what's out there. This is where, you know, we'll say the, any recommendations that we see. At the time, we had recommended that if council were to direct us to amend the zoning bylaw, to lift the moratorium, that we look at potentially certain areas of the town such as McGregor or Pleasant Valley or Essex Center or even the Hamlet of Colchester. So again, it's, it's really up to council. You can either wait to the end of that three-year morit, sorry, period or towards the three years. That was our vision as well as that was really what we had committed to doing. The last item, just for council's information, is that yes, the enforcement piece of, of things, STR license has really allowed us to, to regulate, to issue any administrative penalties and to really take that big step with enforcement ensuring that our STR owners are good neighbors. Thank you.
Chadwick, and just so council, ministry issue and not plan to come back with a report on the moratorium until the three-year notice is Director Chadwick. And last is at a regular council meeting and receive direction from council as a whole. Uh, Mayor Bondi?
Sweet. At this time, I would not support sending, if we were in a regular council meeting, I would not vote in favor of bringing back a report that would lift the moratorium at this point because moratorium is serving its purpose, but it doesn't mean no to more short-term rentals. Anybody that can come forward, they can come forward and they can convince council through a zoning bylaw amendment that there is, there is a need, there is a want, and there isn't a density in their area. For example, personally, I would give a green light to any short-term rental in McGregor, in Harrow, in Essex Ward One, because there is not a saturation there. In Ward Three, I still believe there is a saturation in some areas, but if somebody came to us with a zoning bylaw amendment, I would still be open-minded pending public consultation in that area and pending to see how many are on that road or in that community. I also want to make sure that the short-term rentals that are operating right now do have a chance to operate at capacity. So I don't want to just add more and more and more because the last time we got a report, I think they were forty or fifty percent at capacity. So to me, that's almost reverse economic development because that means fifty, sixty percent of the time, we don't have anybody living in that home, spending money in our communities, going to our schools, going to our churches, going to our restaurants. We're full-time residents, spend money here three hundred and sixty-five days a week. So I also would not support anything without wholesome public conversation on this. We are now building trust with Ward Three, with the residents of Ward Three. And I do not want to go backwards. We've worked really hard, this council, to build, build up the conversation, build up the transparency. So if we were going to open this up, I would have to do my thing and we would probably get a hundred emails opposed. So I feel like it would be a waste of time. Now is not the time. I've been following the appeals committee and there's been quite a few files going through there of people that are, that are getting fines for operating illegally. So I'm still not a hundred percent convinced that we have a handle on everybody that's operating illegally out there. And I want to see the, the Grove at capacity. I want to see Laguna Vita at capacity because they are the real job creators and they bring in more assessment than a, a, a commercial business operating in a residential home that I don't feel we get as much benefit as we do to residents living there three hundred and sixty-five days a week. So I thank you, Councilor Hammond, for bringing it up and I hope we are able to put it to bed.
Councilor McGuire Blaze? Councilor Hammond?
So so what I'm hearing from the mayor is that we haven't shut down the possibility of a short-term rental unit. They're more than welcome to come ask for amendment, but we're using the word moratorium as a deterrent to doing that, is basically what you're saying. And, and another note, let's be fair as far as occupancies go. A lot of the good ones are are booked to capacity year-round. Some of the ones that rely more on the better weather, they're going to be empty this time of year too. Their capacity will go up in the summer regardless of how they run their Airbnbs. I, I am looking forward to the report that's coming back regarding our situation with the Airbnbs. I wouldn't want to remove a moratorium without it. I just wanted to start the discussion because I don't want to handcuff our tourist industry, particularly out in Colchester.
Councilor McGuire Blaze?
Uh, thank you through the chair. Just a quick question and then a follow-up to Director Chadwick. So we're, we should be receiving the three-year update October this year. Correct. Okay, perfect. So this is a great start to the conversation because for January, we're going to get this, we're going to get this report probably nine months, nine, ten months from now. And you can kind of already see the appetite at the table. So right now, if it came, if it came to us, I would, I would say, let's just, let's just put a pause on it. One, it's the summer, it's the, it's the winter. We don't know what it's going to look like. How does the summer months look? We know that that's what it's going to look like. But we also have this come, the report coming back to us in October. I'm not opposed to adding more STRs. I do see the benefit in having them. But I would really, really, before we start saying yes, more STRs, try to lobby the provincial government for us to tax them as a business. So I would like to see our efforts before we start opening, opening up more, I would like to see a lot more effort with, from our, our municipality and our surrounding municipalities. And I know other communities are asking for the same thing, for us to lobby our provincial government to, to change that, to make a change to the taxes for the STRs, make them, make them pay the business taxes and maybe make them, like, add on a vacancy tax because not only are they vacant eight months out of the year, they're a business. So let's, let's tax them as a business. If they want to operate their home as a business, then that's how, that's how we should treat them. And that's how the provincial government should treat them and I don't know why they don't. So I would like to see, I'm not opposed to it, Councilor Hammond, but I would like to see those put in place before we say, okay, let's open it up. Because Mayor Bondi is correct in saying that STRs don't really contribute to the economy. They don't. They don't send their kids to school here. They don't work here. They don't really contribute at all other than the couple hundred dollars they'll blow at ice cold treats. A little plug there. But but that's basically all they're going to do. But if the owners of those buildings are going to be taxed appropriately and we see a benefit from it, then sure, maybe, maybe then I would be more open to the, to the idea of it. Thanks.
Blaze, and just as a note, the last two years for AMO, we have put that topic as a delegation request to Minister of Finance and we've denied both times. So we'll continue to do it on an annual basis. Director Drucevich, and then I'll go to
Chair, council also sent a letter requesting revision of the current way that they're classified for tax purposes. So unfortunately, we are limited to the parameters of the municipal act as well as the assessment act. And within the assessment act, they are deemed residential units. So we did lobby for revision or, or at least investigation into that because it should be based on use exactly as you're saying. And we did not hear back.
Can you to lobby? Because we agree with you. Councilor Maydey?
Couldn't agree with more. Let's continue to lobby. If, you know, the, we have to use this moratorium period effectively, right? And this is great. Let's lobby. Let's, let's get the province to, to allow us to, to deem what they are and tax them accordingly. Let's make sure that our enforcement is robust and keeping pace. And then we could talk about And then we could talk about lifting the moratorium on just the residential areas. And even when we've put the moratorium on, we did discuss about lifting it in wards or, or different areas. And if there was a need, if, if the Ward one councillors would come and say, hey, listen, every day I'm getting a phone call from someone that wants to open up an STR. Let's, let's open it up. But the appetite's not really there. But you know, all those talks are still possible if the appetite was there. But I'd, I'd really say that this last little bit that we have in the moratorium that's sitting here, we use it really effectively. We talk about how we want to tax them, what taxing structures we're able to do. And then if we still want to see them in residential areas or if we're still, just keep them like they are, where they're at commercial properties and they're in our, our tourism destinations already that, that are in our agricultural and our mineries out in, in Colchester. Kind of where they belong. My comment on.
Councillor Matey, Nelson?
Through you, CEO suite. Just to give council an update. The only measure that's available to municipalities at the time or as of right now for taxation on short term rentals is through the municipal accommodation tax, which administration is currently looking into as well as our county partners and different municipalities across the county. And we actually have a meeting in a couple of weeks to go over it, to look at different scenarios, seeing how the city of Windsor implements it and seeing how municipalities locally could potentially look at a municipal accommodation tax to implement to short term rentals and other types of accommodations throughout the municipality. So stay tuned on that and we'll, we'll keep council updated on that one.
Councillor Maguire Blaze?
Through the chair, now to, to Mr. Silveira, is that like Niagara Falls' tourism tax?
Through CEO suite. So yes and no. The municipal accommodation tax, so the Niagara, I think it's Niagara Falls, the town of Niagara Falls has a municipal accommodation tax which is implemented municipally and charged to hotel stays. I think they also have a different type of tax on restaurants as well, if I'm not mistaken. This is just for accommodation. So most municipalities across the province do a 4% taxation on top of a stay, which is charged to the user and not the owner of the property. Whereas in the case that you're presenting, you would like potentially a tax charged to the owner of the property operating a short term rental. This is a 4% tax, taxed to the user, which is then remitted to the municipality annually. And then the municipality can use 50% of that funding for tourism type initiatives like infrastructure for tourism, bike lanes, sports parks, things like that. And 50% of that has to go to a nonprofit organization or like a TWEPI to work on destination marketing initiatives locally for promoting the municipal.
And sorry, can you, can you say that can, I know you're looking into it. Can you say that only goes to STRs? Because I'd hate to put that tax on like the Grove and Longa Vita and, and other actual commercial short term stay places. Can you like?
Yeah. So council can make that determination at the time, once administration has had a time to review all the different scenarios. I will say that the municipalities that I know that have adopted municipal accommodation tax, it applies to hotels and short term rentals where they leave some things out would be campgrounds, secondary, post-secondary institution types of short term stays, things like that. But the majority of municipal accommodation taxes do also include hotel stays. And again, it's not charged to the owner of the property. It's charged to the person booking the stay. And there's no historical evidence that proves that it actually deters any visitors. Case in point, Niagara, people are willing to, to pay the extra.
Thank you. So we'll go to councillor Geron and then last will be councillor Matey.
Thank you to the chair. I'll keep it short since we're at the end of it, but Nelson said a lot of the stuff that I was going to make some replies to. I am in favor of definitely continuing to look into lifting that moratorium. I agree with taxing them commercially if we can do that. I don't have a problem with the accommodation tax that London, Niagara Falls, many places do. And that money goes, a lot of it goes right back into the, into the community anyways for, to keep promoting tourism. Saturation is a word that gets thrown around a lot. It means something different to everybody. What may be exorbitant, exorbitant to one may not be to another. So who are we to say what is oversaturated and what isn't oversaturated? I don't know. I'm not sold on that complete case yet. Same thing with the oxygen rates. I don't know who knows what the oxygen rate is or isn't at the Grove. I really don't know. And I don't even know 50% if that is a number, if that's adequate or not for hotels. I, I would think 50% every day would be pretty adequate. Can't compare STRs with hotels. STRs are usually people looking. I'm going to Nashville. I'm not looking to stay at a hotel because I'm going for extended period of time, three days or more. I want, I want the flexibility of having, making my own breakfast, having my own lunches and perhaps going out and, and doing stuff at night, having dinner or whatever it may be. So comparing the two, I think is, is, is not really a comparing apples to apples. Hotels, people like hotels for the reasons they like them and people like STRs for the reasons they like them. And without them, I don't know what we do. There's reasons why there's STRs in places. It's usually because there's not enough hotels or the alternative, it's not maybe family. People want to sit on a back deck sometimes and they want to enjoy the, the surroundings that they're, that they're, they're renting. So in favor of discussing it, we've done a great job over the last years, listening to the Colchester community, listen to having administration look into licensing and, and getting these STRs on, we know how, we have a handle of how many there are. We, there may be more out there. We're not, we didn't get them all maybe, but we identify that. We're still, we're still looking. But I think we've done a lot of good work and I think just saying no all the time without keeping it open is, is a mistake. So I'm in favor of at least continuing to, to look at it.
Councillor Allard, then councillor Matey to finish it up.
Chair, I agree with leaving it as it is now. The moratorium word is kind of a stick with a lot of people that they feel like it's a dead stop. Where we've allowed other people to come in and, and ask us if they want it to. We had one a couple of months ago. There's no shame in doing that. Is this where I find the problem is, is the saturation of so much in the south and nothing in the north. And that's where I'd like to see a change.
Allard and councillor Matey?
Thank you for letting me speak again. I realize that I didn't give our staff enough credit. Essex was one of the leading municipalities in developing these bylaws and they did a wonderful job. And, and I can't say thank you enough for that. You guys, you know, it really did help. It really did help strangle things in. We were on a path that was leading to, to who knows where. But I believe that these bylaws really helped. And that they gave us a lot to look at. And when we're talking about lifting them and allowing it by right in a residential area, the reason why that I really believe the moratorium should be there and it's what councillor Allard just pointed out. We had one come before us not too long ago in an area where there was too many of them already. And we voted no on it. So that meant that this did its job. This was exactly the reason for it. And, you know, we didn't allow one to, to, to set up shop. And I, I think that's showing that this tool is being used and it's being used wisely. If one were to come before us that there wasn't much complaints about, or if there was in an area that's totally unrepresented by STRs, then I believe that we would actually vote for it and allow it to happen. So, so I like this tool and then I'm thankful that, that you gave it to us. Thank you.
Councillor Matey. So that ends all our topics tonight. I want to thank council. It was a great discussion along with administration with feedback. And at this term time, I'll turn it over to Director Melandrucolo.
I'm looking for a motion that council received the report of the presiding officer of the community of the whole and that council adopt the noted recommendation of the whole. Moved by Deputy Mayor Shepley, seconded by councillor Hammond. All in favor? All opposed? That motion is carried.
At this time, I look for a motion and a second for adjournment. Moved by Deputy Mayor, supported by councillor Allard, all in favor. Have a good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us.